It's like a kid.
What is it, the L O? Uppercase lowercase?
I know.
It would work, I couldn't get on it anyhow.
Okay, six o'clock, I'm gonna call the Loudoun County Commission meeting to order for February 5th, 2024. First up is Jim Jenkins.
Commissioners, this is a resolution to amend the Loudoun County zoning resolution, Article 4, supplementary provisions applying to specific district sections, 4.030, temporary use regulations pursuant to Tennessee Code Annotated Section 13-7-15. Again, this is where we amend our zoning to allow someone with an active building permit to occupy a camper for one year. It also allows us to issue a replacement permit for a mobile home that's on the property, give them time to move the new one in for 30 days. Within 30 days, if you should contact our office, let us know the other one has been removed. Keeps them from having to go to the board as someone appeals to request these variances.
And now just come straight to your office, you'll make that approval?
Yes, sir.
And then what's the rule if they go, they, you know, 365 days?
So if you had a RV you're living in, built your house, obviously at that point, they can apply to whatever your town regs, they can go to the BCA, but we proceed, we'll find them, they need to remove it.
So it would just revert back to the way that we have been doing it after the 365?
It would be, and what you'd hope is that in that situation, we do something more than a version of completion.
That's hard to say, you're not, we're not going to, oh, we're going to get to the point where they're right at the point of being done, say, oh, you're one day over, you gotta go, or you'll give them some leave, right?
My office does not move that quickly.
Amen.
Anything else? Jim, you're number six on the agenda.
Thank you all.
Okay, I've asked Commissioner Shaver to open the meeting for us tonight.
You will do the pledge of allegiance first?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Thank you, God, for this beautiful day you've given us today, it's almost as though you know what we need when we need it, and we certainly appreciate it. Lots of things going on in the world that need your attention, that need our support, but only you can handle it. Our country's gotten in a strange place these days, it's a very odd world we're living in, and back in the Bible, you told Abraham, "If you can go find ten righteous men, I won't destroy Sodom and Gomorrah." Couldn't find ten. In this country, we do still have many, many righteous men and women. We appreciate you not destroying our country just yet and giving us a chance, there's still a lot of good men and women taking care of things. Watch over this body tonight, give us the sense to do the sort of things we need to do and represent our people like we've said we would. Watch over all of us, take care of us, and the folks in the audience, and our law enforcement, everybody, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Tammy, call or roll?
Randolph?
Here.
James?
Here.
Jenkins?
Here.
Quillen?
Here.
Satterfield?
Here.
Whitfield?
Here.
Quillen?
Here.
Morrison?
Here.
Shaver?
Here.
Waller?
Okay, next up is the adoption of the February 5th, 2024 county commission agenda.
Chairman, I'd like to add one thing to it. We had a email from Tennessee National requesting a resolution. I'll explain it wherever you put me, but it needs immediate attention.
Okay, so the addition is for Tennessee National, from Commissioner James?
Just one quick question, Commissioner. It wasn't at the workshop, generally, we don't vote on things unless it comes with a workshop. Should we assume there's some urgency involved in this? That's the one exception to put things through without the workshop.
TBA is asking for it as soon as possible.
Okay, so, just curious why it didn't go through the proper channels?
Yeah, well, we got it done the last week.
Okay.
Thank you.
We added that to the agenda and the other?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as it's been amended.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
See, we got a second?
Inspector Randolph.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up is the? I added it just after Buddy and before Aaron. Okay? Next is the reading and acceptance of the January 2nd, 2024 Loudoun Commission minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes, the whole six minutes of them.
Do we have a second?
James?
Seconded by Commissioner James. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next up is public comments, first up is Pat Hunter.
My name is Pat Hunter, and I've been appointed to address County Commission about items 8D, consideration of recommendation to approve line adjustments and/or amendments in the following funds. County General 101, which is number one. Number six, General Capital Projects Fund 171, and number seven, Rural Debt Service Fund 156. I would like to start off with Budget Amendment 101, page 25, preservation of records. It is extremely important to preserve our community's past, archives give lines to past history. I support the preservation of records, Budget Amendment located on page 25, for equipment and website for funding the county historian's archives virtual project funding request. I visited the county historian's virtual website of pictures of past years, which are very interesting and convenient, but it is not all-inclusive. It is my understanding that permanent and archival records, which were cleaned and restored by Belfour, were delivered to the Loudoun County Records Storage Facility, but I have not read anything or heard anything said at a public meeting. I was very surprised when a story ran in the News Herald that it did not address the archival records, which are part of this community's rich history. How and when will the citizenry be provided with public access to those records? With regards to Budget Amendment 156, the education debt for 322,000, if you could explain that? I went before the school board, they couldn't explain it, and I didn't attend the budget meeting. And also Budget Amendment 171, the county office building renovation, election, and aging, if that could be explained also, I'd appreciate it, thank you.
John Cook?
Good evening, John Cook, here representing Heritage Land Open Partners. I didn't come here necessarily to prepare to make comments, but I understand that the item at Cedar Hills got pulled off the agenda.
Hang on just a second, Mr. Chairman, don't let me interrupt you, this is not on the agenda, it never was on the agenda.
We took it off.
So when I was at the workshop meeting, it was stated verbally that it was going to be on the agenda for the meeting on the 5th, which is why I'm here.
If I remember right, it was taken off. I think you've got letters going back and forth.
I did not have any letters to that effect whatsoever.
I have concerns with there's been no weather since you've made modifications, so what I want to do is see what happens this weekend, and I got a question for Jim, when Jim comes back up here, about how to proceed forward.
Respectfully, we had 11 inches of snow, and after the 11 inches of snow, we had nearly three inches of rain. I provided pictures, I provided video, I've done everything Mr. Jenkins has asked us to do, and you're holding up a tax-paying citizen and a tax-generating community without any cause. And I'm trying to figure out how do I move this forward? Because I've been to every meeting, I've complied with everything that's been asked, and here I am, being told, no, we're not gonna hear tonight. And if you stand in my shoes, that's kind of upsetting.
Mr. Chairman, I will point out again, your situation notwithstanding, this is not on the agenda, it's not germane to the agenda, and this is not supposed to have public comment time. I think Commissioner Waller's gonna talk to Mr. Jenkins here when he comes up, but?
Why would it not be on the agenda if it was, everything was provided prior to the last workshop, and the next thing that should be done is get it put on the agenda? You stated yourself, Mr. Shaver, that it would be on the 5th, you said it, Mr. Waller said it, that was said by at least two commissioners.
It's not on here, so we're not really supposed to type public comment on anything that's not on the agenda.
Respectfully, I don't know if you can add to the agenda, I don't know, but this has been months in the making, you guys voted on this, I believe, in November or December, and we have complied with it, I was in contact with Mr. Jenkins within five days of his first contact with us, met him on site, we've gone through every step. We're four, almost, we're three months later now, guys. What am I supposed to do that I haven't done? Somebody tell me.
Not be speaking right now would be my first suggestion.
Well, when is my time?
It's not on the agenda, most likely, my guess is it'll be on the next workshop to be discussed.
But it was on the last workshop. Mr. Jenkins brought it in.
I'm gonna talk to Jim about it when he comes back up here next.
Okay, we'll take care of it then.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, Jim Jenkins, come on back up.
So this is again, the resolution to amend Loudoun County's own resolution, Article 4, supplementary provisions applying to specific zoning district section, 4.030, temporary use regulations pursuant to Tennessee Code Annotated Section 13-7-15.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve that, and it came as a recommendation unanimously from the planning commission. It's one less thing they have to see to, and it's a very simple suggestion.
Got a second, Commissioner Waller?
Inspector can have it.
Inspector, we all have to defer the inspector now. He needs a hat, he needs a pipe.
You got one, don't you?
Jacket with patches on the sleeves.
Okay, hang on, we got a motion by Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Commissioner Randolph. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
We have this issue with the Grovet's here hills, and I know Mr. Cook has sent emails saying he's not had any contact with the neighbor on the south side, he has, so that rubs me a little bit the wrong way, not telling the truth there.
I have not.
What can we do with, in respect to requiring possibly a three-year bond, I mean, they've added a lot of grade there, a lot of water coming into one place, a couple places in between homes, shooting down to the neighboring property. Is there a way to get, you know, a $25,000 three-year bond, so we can see what the long-term effects of this grading change and, you know, adding, adding all that rooftop, removes a lot of ground where the ground, uh, the water can soak into, so I got some concerns about that.
Specifically for that, I do not know, to be honest with you, whether you can do that or not, usually we have bonds for subdivisions, and they're put in place, and those bonds are released. Third plan commission wants the requirements to be satisfied, as, you know, the concern is, is the increase in water runoff, that's one thing, if it's an erosion and settlement issue.
It's both.
I would have to have a book in front of me, but somewhere in our regs, it talks about erosion and settlement, if over the course, seems like there's a responsibility for a year, if over the course of a period of that year, something occurs, then they're still responsible for maintaining, you know, to make sure you don't have a problem crop up with erosion and settlement. There's a little bit of language in the zone resolution about that.
But that expires after a year, you know?
Yeah, it would be after a year, then if they, they correct, that gives a little bit of timeless maintenance, but as far as something that this nature can foresee, anything additional, I don't know about.
Shake on that form, and we'll discuss at the workshop and vote first of March. Thank you.
Hey, Jim?
Yes, sir.
So you've been after that property several times, probably?
Yes, sir.
In your opinion, is Mr. Cook satisfied the problem?
So, so when you're looking at this situation, it's not something that I can see or visually see, but what Mr. Cook did do is he hired a, you had an engineer that did the development drawings and the runoff calculations, he hired a separate engineering firm that come out. They can't use the same numbers because they didn't do the original development, but he did a site assessment, he run calculations and numbers on that site based on what was occurring, you know, acreage drainage before and after, and what's in place, and he was of the opinion that it was an insignificant amount, if any, that was being increased as far as runoff. He stated, you know, based on site conditions, there wasn't a lot of siltation built up at the base of the slope, which would indicate a lot of runoff issues and things of that nature in his letter, he needed a report of letter.
What I'm going with is somebody who's lived there for 60 years, my other concern is right now you just have matten put down, there's no vegetation that's taken, you know, hold.
Sure.
That's why I want you to look at bond options, to see what we can do to make sure there's permanent fixture here, I don't know what, I mean, I'm just looking to it, we'll see.
I understand.
At the next workshop.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Mayor Brad Trump?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, 7AMB is the resolution, the agreement with Coffee Culture, after they're in the record storage building. It was added in as far as, I guess, the footage they could use, as well as the third-day opt-out. And all the things that were set are there, so I would request the commission's approval for the county enter to that agreement.
I'll make a motion that we approve that, and I've had several cups of coffee from Coffee Culture, if you hadn't, go check them out, they're good.
I had hot chocolate from there on Saturday, and the better side.
Okay, we got a motion from Commissioner Randolph, who had a second?
I'll say it.
Seconded by?
Are y'all gonna wear a little light?
Commissioner Whitfield?
Sir?
Okay. I understand the coffee, we got a motion by Commissioner Randolph, seconded by Commissioner Whitfield, to approve the resolution for Coffee Culture. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I get busy, TNEC Arc Resolution.
This resolution helps us? This resolution? This resolution helps us to make the eligibility criteria within the grant itself for the two projects, the Teleco Village project and the Greenback Silver project.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Seconded by, okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Satterfield, seconded by Commissioner James, to approve the resolution. For information, Teleco Village already has Jacob's Engineering under contract for their sewer and water projects. So, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries. Next up is the Tennessee National issue.
Well, I was sitting here going through the email, I think I'm just gonna pull this, put it on the workshop, because the resolution that's in here is a sample. So we need to get a resolution before we even vote on it.
Vote dock.
Done in Marina.
They're wanting to add to their?
Vote dock.
Repairing it, right? Marina?
They've not?
The resort status?
No, they're wanting to add boat slips.
Boat slips.
So, but TBA's requiring them to do a permit, they have to start from scratch because the last owner messed it up. So they have to get permission from us and the city to do it.
And they've got X number of boat slips now.
Yes.
They've already been approved for a whole bunch more.
Yes.
This is approval for even more.
I think the approval for more was what was messed up, so they're trying to fix.
I was wondering, because they built so many that were approved for so many?
It was very confusing when we read the document. I'd say get it rendered out, yeah.
Yeah, you're gonna pull it for the workshop?
Yeah, I'll put it on the workshop.
Have you ever sent emails over the resort status as well?
No.
The head guy with our meeting was supposed to get together, I'll keep y'all on the lookout.
They've applied for the resort status.
Something kicked back in them, so they're gonna?
Somebody didn't pay $10,000. That's how you get resort status, you gotta pay certain late slates money.
We did that once, didn't we?
I thought we did too, it didn't go, that's why I told him.
And I think that the paperwork has been?
Maybe it went up since the last time, maybe it's $20,000.
I'll make sure y'all look, they did it.
Okay, we'll put it on the workshop for the 20th. Okay, Aaron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Letter A is consideration of recommendation to approve an ARPA fund resolution for the Greenback Silver project to appropriate 495,000 towards the match of the Greenback ARPA project and 25,000 towards the preliminary engineering reports.
Okay, and we're having to do this because East Tennessee Development?
Because you only give me your money.
Well, I do, I wanna get this done, but they, they had to have the paperwork, a pinky swear that, that we are going, that we've got the money and we're going to fund.
Is that in the form of a motion?
That's in the form of a motion.
We got a motion by?
Yes.
We got a motion by Commissioner Satterfield, seconded by Commissioner Shaver, to approve the funds of 495 for the sewer and 25 for the unassigned ARPA funds to do the study, is it?
So, yeah, it's an engineering study.
Any further discussion? Tammy, does money involve, call or roll?
James?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Quillen?
Aye.
Satterfield?
Aye.
Whitfield?
Aye.
Quillen?
Aye.
Morrison?
Yes.
Shaver?
Aye.
Waller?
Aye.
Randolph?
Yes.
Motion. And while we're on this, just to remind everybody that has ARPA funds sitting around, they have to be, not just orally, they have, we have to have paperwork on projects for it, don't we?
Spent or obligated by December 31st, 2024.
I've got the MOU with Little Orsony ready, Bob toasted up, I'll send it back, I'll make sure there's nothing else anybody wants to add to it, but it should be good to go.
For the next workshop?
For the training station?
Put that on the next workshop.
That for the training facility?
Got it. And now you're broke, Coach, like, people would ask.
Hallelujah.
That's gonna be great for the Greenback community, though.
I can't wait for it. Number B?
Letter B is consideration of recommendation to approve $2,000 for EMA radio programming trainings to be funded from the Fire Safety Committee.
Second.
We got a motion to approve by Commissioner Whitfield, seconded by Commissioner Quillen. Any further discussion? Money involved, call or roll?
Jenkins?
Yes.
Quillen?
Aye.
Satterfield?
Aye.
Whitfield?
Aye.
Quillen?
Aye.
Morrison?
Yes.
Shaver?
Aye.
Waller?
Aye.
Randolph?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
All right, letter C is consideration of recommendation to approve an additional 8,500 for the election edition at the county office building.
Aaron, can you tell us what that is going, why, I mean?
It's internet switches, it's really got nothing to do with the building, maybe we talked about in the budget.
Right.
It's for the, for her, I understand, for her to have her internet access in the building.
Well, and it also had to do with putting up cameras that will cover the vicinity of the new portion of the building.
So this wasn't included in the original amount, but in order to have it what it needs to be, we gotta have, we need cameras and we need internet.
The cameras are gonna be Wi-Fi based, so.
Good, okay. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Commissioner Waller. Any further discussion? Money involved, call or roll?
Quillen?
Aye.
Satterfield?
Aye.
Whitfield?
Aye.
Quillen?
Aye.
Morrison?
Yes.
Shaver?
Aye.
Waller?
Aye.
Randolph?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Do you need these separate, or can these go together?
They can all go together.
Budget committee unanimous approval, discussed workshop, I'll make a motion to approve budget amendments in 1 through 7.
Do we have a second?
I'll make sure.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Shaver, seconded by Commissioner Whitfield, to approve items 1 through 7. Any further discussion?
Can you tell us about the School Federal Projects Fund, the 322,000?
Not a thing.
And are you referring to one of the general, the public comments? Okay, so I believe that it was in regards to the Education Debt Service Fund. That $300,000 that is being put into the budget is to cover the principal and interest payments for this fiscal year for the $3 million loan that was recently issued.
Okay.
For the new school. Does that, does that make sense to everybody?
Have they already, have they paid in full for the property, has the school board already paid in full for it? This is for the guys with the protractors and slide rails and everything?
Little bit, little bitty protractor and slide rail for 300,000. You gotta spend 3 million to get some big protractor and slide rail.
And this is just to?
This is just to pay the interest.
This is just to pay the principal and interest on the loan that we put the money for. So then they use the money to actually pay the people that are doing the project. In a different fund, that's why the fund is ours.
We're just, we're holding the bag as it goes.
There you go, you got it.
Any other discussion? Money involved, call or roll?
Satterfield?
Yes, aye.
Whitfield?
Aye.
Quillen?
Aye.
Morrison?
Yes.
Shaver?
Yes.
Waller?
Aye.
Randolph?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Quillen?
Aye.
Okay, and the last item is monthly reports, which were included in your packets that you can get online. And that's all.
What does, what does that mean?
I'm looking around, I'm looking around here for my summary, my, it's not there.
You can get that online, see, now it's paper proof.
It's on your blog.
I'm looking, I'm looking, all of my iPads opened down through there right now.
Well, it's on the internet, so I mean, or it's on our website, and it's available 24/7, whenever you want to access it, Commissioner.
I'll make your copy.
I'm just bringing up a point here.
I'll round you a copy.
Okay, I'm good.
If you want.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. And Mr. Waller?
Motion to approve all bonds and notaries under 9A.
Second. Who did that? Inspector?
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Waller to approve the bonds and notaries, seconded by Commissioner James. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make just a little bit of an odd request, this is the first time I've seen Ms. Hunter here in a while, first time I've had to talk to her. Back in October, she put out a public statement on Nextdoor social media, and she said that the road to Highway 11 from the new proposed school had been removed, which was not true. I've asked her multiple times to correct that, anybody can make a mistake, but in this length of time, it still hasn't been corrected, and now other people are parroting this. Jim Jenkins even got a call today. How are they gonna get it out? They don't have a road to Highway 11. I would publicly ask Ms. Hunter, please correct that statement before it goes any further. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion adjourned.
I like that one more thing.
I didn't see you for you.
To our students in the back?
It's not on the agenda, just like Mr. Cook's wasn't on the agenda, and Mr. Shaver is picking out a turn, thank you.
To our students in the back, welcome.
Would y'all stand up, tell us who your class and who y'all are?
Come on!
We're taking econ and gas for Ms. Brewster. I'm Hannah Mills Harris.
I'm Sabrina Nelson.
I'm Reagan Russell.
I'm Sarah.
Well, how?
What have you?
I hope you get all the extra credit you can. Tell the teacher we said A-plus. Okay, thank you for being here. We have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We got a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.